I guess I've never tried that.
Right. Six forty-five, what's that? We will get going with our workshop. Welcome you, Brad and Lucas Run with number three here.
I'll take the lead here, Your Honor. As counsel, Mary, you're where we've held two informational meetings related to the 2023 development project that's proposed. With that, we met effective property over staff taking feedback on the parking options for the proposed project. You've all participated and heard that majority of those that participated were in favor of the parking option before the direct consultant to complete the report in which you will then consider in February, we're asking for consensus or directed direction from the council as to which option we should put in the final report.
All right. I hammered it. Did you get any emails or phone calls or comments of votes?
I am not aware of any. Are you anywhere else? I'll send you more additional ones.
I don't refresh my memory, but I think what it ended up was they wanted to keep the eight foot.
The majority of those that were in attendance were, when we did this drop poll, had indicated that were in favor of proceeding with the parking option.
Can you refresh my memory? How many people were there that voted?
Yeah, there was probably twenty-five to thirty people in attendance at the most. I would say it was probably a five to one ratio.
What do we have in the rows here? One, two, three, four, five. So it's nine or ten per row?
Yeah.
Probably were twenty, twenty-five people.
Yeah.
But I think, I think you'd have to take the gun to the tip of the numbers in little meetings and they have another one. If we purposely put it off a month, it's another way. Somebody wanted us to do it again sooner or later, people have to be responsible against that.
I think it's like that formula. You've got twenty-five percent that don't show up, don't care, twenty-five percent that do care and don't show up, and then the people that show up are. I think I'm leaning towards following consensus of the group.
I guess I just, I find it interesting and then I feel like I have to just say it out loud that we started that conversation with what I recall to be a pretty negative tone about how much this would cost. And came to the consensus of the group where the vote turned out to say, we're not going to pick the cheapest option. So I'm still a little bit struggling with that and considering the value of parking from what I understand. I don't necessarily want to go against what a group that we brought in here to ask their opinion was, but at the same time, it does concern me that the rest of the city is who's actually paying for that parking lane. So I don't know. I don't have a solid opinion on what our decision should be tonight per se, but that's, that's what I observed. I thought that if we want to keep taxes low, as low as we can, not spending the extra hundred thousand dollars on the parking lane would be one way that we could help that problem. But that's just what I saw.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I agree totally with the fact that the whole city has to pay for that. But I'm gonna go back to when we took that from a two-lane road and we turned it into a four-lane road. And we went through all this with the neighbors again. We had basically two driveways, a parking lane and a trail. And we took front yards. And that's what they got in return was place the parking. Now, it doesn't, not all of them lost so much that they lost their parking, but there was a city, maybe kind of area that did lose, you know, the front driveway or garage. So. And I remember all that discussion that we had and we did this to start with. And. You know, if you want to go back and say, well, it's just maybe a certain section that needs the parking, you know, that'd be one thing. But how do you take the road from, you know, one side and shrink it down, you know, for the rest of the day?
That's the difficulty, I guess. And then I don't know, what I heard was no one seemed to even be remotely open to the idea, the rollover curb concept. I don't know. I don't know. I live in a different type of neighborhood where people park in the ditches and we have ditches, so I don't know.
You also, you probably also have some, a little bit of shoulder too. So, you know, it's not like you're rolling off, are you rolling off the pavement right into, you know, manicured grass?
Not my yard.
Yeah. I'm in the same area as my yard. But.
What, is this on the agenda? How do we forward it or how do we deal with this?
It's one of the.
We're just trying to get a direct or consensus from the council as to how staff is to direct the consultant to complete the report.
I guess I would agree with what council member Brad said. I don't want to go against the people who were here and express their opinion, but so I do support what they voted for, but I can definitely agree with what Zach is saying too. And I wonder, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, how much more is it going to cost cumulatively to maintain that extra parking lane? I'm gonna support what the people here said they wanted.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I agree with the fact we, in fact, when I had this conversation, I agree with what you're saying. And I don't, I can't think of any other neighborhoods where, and I might be wrong, but where we'll encounter this situation again, but that, that road was a problem from day one. I guess I, I would go along with doing, doing what, you know, we brought them in, asked their opinions of either, if we weren't able to tell much of the depth of that math, otherwise we kind of, I don't need to turn quotes, I guess, on the vote. So I guess I'm okay with, I'm actually okay with it, but I think we should go ahead with it.
And just for context, then, I've heard what's heard here, I'm not planning to dig my heels in at this point. It's just an observation I had as far as, it just, I'm still not entirely convinced that that's the right investment, but we're at the study point, go ahead and study it.
Yeah, and I appreciate your honesty about that whole subject, so thank you. All right, will we head to the traffic study?
I just emailed you the. Trevor's loaded it up. I believe all the council is aware of the proposed development on corner of Hinkley and Cypress Drive. And to be able to vote like Campbell to keep their properties out of Fargo, where it's not here. In preliminary application meetings with staff, it was determined that the traffic impact study needed to be completed. The city had, or staff had contracted with SDH to have that completed. We have representatives from SDH here this evening to go over the findings of the results of that study. And then Trevor will also talk about the next steps that need to be done in order to keep that proposed development on track. So with that, I'll turn it over to Trevor and SDH. Two over. One more.
Hi, everybody. I'm Justin Adams, I'm a traffic engineer for SDH. I'm just gonna go through the traffic impact study, kind of a procedure we use when we do one of these and then the findings we got here. First thing we usually do is look at existing traffic volumes, some petitions in the area. Then we look at the development, how many trips that's gonna produce. Usually use a five-year analysis to see five years after the, it opens, kind of where things are gonna be at. Then we conduct intersection analysis, whatever intersections may be impacted. Determine that impact and determine what needs to be done to mitigate that. And in this case, we reviewed the proposed access points just to make sure that the proposed accesses are gonna be safe, not cause any issues on the roadway. And obviously there's recommendations that what the impact's gonna be and what needs to be done. For this study area, realize that's a little bit small, but it's between College Road is on the north end and then Highland Scenic Road or Conover Forty-Eight is on the south end. And really, the area that we're looking at is bound by Hinkley Road and South Forty-Eight. The three intersections we looked at are Hinkley Road and Cypress Drive and then Berrywood at Conover Forty-Eight. And then we weren't able to count, obviously, because the intersection doesn't exist yet, but Cypress Drive at Conover Forty-Eight, once Cypress Drive was extended to Conover Forty-Eight. Proposed development includes five fifty unit apartment buildings, two hundred and fifty units, and that's about a little less than seventeen hundred trips a day created by this and less than a hundred and fifty in the peak hour. So we need it's a hundred and twenty in the AM, one forty-five in the PM. So one of the first findings we got was Cypress Drive should be extended in 2023 between Hinkley and South Forty-Eight, just to make sure that we don't add any more trips to Berrywood. I know that the city's received several complaints about volumes and speeds on that road already, so avoiding that at all costs is good. Extending this road is also a big part of the city's long-range transportation plan to have a reliever roadway to have a three-seventy-one, three-seventy-one from Conover Forty-Eight all the way to eventually Conover Forty-Nine. There'll be an increase in through trips on Cypress Drive. When that happens, these trips will mostly be local trips that are avoiding three-seventy-one to kind of go between College and South Forty-Eight. For that reason, we recommend this, both as a three-lane roadway, but continuous two-lane left turn lane. That gives you a little more capacity on the roadway and also provides a left turn lane at each access point. We do recommend maintaining a hundred and twenty foot right-of-way, just in case there's a need for future expansion of that roadway, which has been a part of the city's backdoor by. We did an access review. The three accesses that are proposed on Cypress Drive do not meet the city's guidelines for access on this kind of roadway, but when it's built as a three-lane roadway, there'll be a left turn lane at every access point. And there won't be, since there's so many access points, it's not gonna be a lot of traffic in and out of any given access point. So in our opinion, that's safe and recommend that those access points are allowed.
Didn't we talk to the developer? Didn't they change that?
Yes, they've, they've agreed to take and consolidate that now to single entrances to, from the dual entrances. I have that in an email.
But did they, did they change anything on Cypress?
Cypress, they didn't change anything. Cypress, they still have the three access points.
So Cypress, I think is good, but there's, I kind of circled him on that image, the two on Douglas Fird Drive and Hinkley Road should be consolidated to one. They're like within a hundred feet of each other, which can cause some right-of-way confusion with drivers, you know, who's gonna leave first? If they're both going the same direction, supporting each other. Consolidated, those is a good idea. Intersection operations, so the two existing intersections, Hinkley and Cypress and South Forty-Eight and Berrywood are expected to operate acceptably for the next five years with this development. And then the future intersection of South Forty-Eight and Cypress Drive can operate acceptably as a roundabout or a minor street stop control. The exact control for that intersection is not yet been determined. But if it is minor street stop control, it's recommended that there are turn lanes added on South Forty-Eight. It's a high-speed roadway, so you want to get turn lanes on there to get vehicles out of the way, especially with the increase in through traffic on Cypress once it's extended. With that, the next steps with this study is need to determine the build for the intersection of South Forty-Eight and Cypress Drive. That would require an ICE report and an ICE study, which the city and county plan to conduct South Forty-Eight corridor study. Believe in next year, right, Trevor?
Okay.
Yep, to determine not only the needs at that intersection, but other intersections along South Forty-Eight. And then feasibility studies, right, needs to be completed for the Cypress Drive extension, and that is being done concurrently, South Forty-Eight study. There's a need to enter into an assessment agreement with the developer. That, are there any questions or comments?
Consolidate questions or thoughts?
I guess I'm a little bit interested in, somewhere in the documentation that I was reading, it looked like the concept of a roundabout on Forty-Eight, was it actually potentially less efficient than a stop sign? Am I maybe misreading the data or?
No, so that, so in this study, we just kind of did a preliminary analysis. There's two different, there's quite a few different analysis, kind of programs we use. And we use HCS to look at a roundabout, that's calculation-based, so it's a little more conservative than the simulation-based one. We used a minor street style. If you use the same one, a roundabout is efficient, more efficient almost all the time, so. And I have looked at both, so a roundabout will be more efficient.
Has the county weighed in on any of that stuff yet or not?
The county has seen this study, this traffic impact study. I'll go back, move one slide, kind of the next steps. Yeah, what the county wants to do is actually do a corridor study that's not just for this development, but that entire corridor from College to Hyatt Drive. They're willing to go fifty-fifty with the city. We've started down the path of doing that. We'd like to do it early on, just so we can figure out with the feasibility study for Cypress Drive, what the developers' costs are. Today, with the deadline for January, should back up David Campbell, is the president of Campbell Properties, opposing to do this project out of Fargo, North Dakota. And he was, he was gonna have his application in for zoning today for the January meetings, but he's slowed down just a little bit because the study needs to make sure that his accesses will work, was the first thing. And then the next hurdle is, is the assessments. What are the assessments estimated at? So the next steps is, is to do the feasibility study, so we can write an assessment agreement with the development. And then as part of that feasibility study, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with the intersection of Cypress and Forty-Eight. So really, the corridor study and the feasibility study need to be going on at the same time. So yes, I've got, I just checked my emails. David's got an email in. He got the RCA for this study. He's the one that paid. He paid a hundred percent for this traffic impact study for his development. And he's in full agreement with the recommendation to consolidate both those entrances on Cypress or on Hinkley Road to one single access point and those two dual ones on Douglas Fird, one access point. He has no issues with that. He has no issues with the road being built as a three-lane continuous center turn lane on Cypress, because it lines up then with his three access points that he's got showing on his development plans. So he has no issues with what we proposed, the RCA outlets headed to the city council tonight for approval of the study. But what he wants to know next is where we have with the costs. We have a design from WSN from the past. We have a past feasibility study. So what we would be doing was updating that feasibility study with Seth. And at the same time, we would like to do the corridor study with the county to make sure that the roundabout is the most efficient. We've been planning a roundabout with the county. A roundabout's been planned. We've been talking about it for at least five years, maybe seven. And if you recall that when we did the forest vein from Liv Station Twenty-four in the North Forest View Project on Campbellwood Trail, we run that forest vein, we bought property from Ritter Public Utilities, and we cleared way out, that forest vein is put out at the tree line. That's in order to accommodate the roundabout without having those public utilities underneath that roundabout, so we could maintain them to get to them. We have to do any repairs or fix them or just clean and maintain them. So we've been planning that roundabout there with the county for many years, and we've been developing, designing other projects with that in mind. So I think the ICE report will prove whether it is the most efficient and the right thing to do long-term. I think it will be because it also, I think it'll quote, it'll take in, take, the speeds will come down in between those points. But the other question is, is how many more roundabouts between there and three-seventy-one? In our long-range transportation plan, we show a signal light at Douglas Fird coming into County Road Forty-Eight. We also show a signal light where Hastings Road comes into Forest View and Forty-Eight intersection through the Jeff Cell development to the, in the northeast corner of three-seventy-one and Forty-Eight. We show them a signal lights. Well, what the county wants to do with this corridor study is determine, I think, I think it's all gonna lean towards roundabouts. Well, we want to show the roundabouts, because then do we get development to help pay for those costs? The other thing they want to look at is the interchange on three-seventy-one and Forty-Eight, that Jeff Cell property and the church property on the south, my county road Forty-Eight has entrances pretty close to the three-seventy-one right-of-way on the east-west side of their properties. And with the interchange going in, those entrances won't work there. So we want to show that those entrances need to be moved, we need to come up with different access points. That church access is gonna have to be changed in the future. So that whole corridor study will take all of that into consideration and figure out what the right plan is for the future. So we're ready for if and when that development happens. Both on that Jeff Cell property, Dean's salvage yard that redeveloped, you know, that got, that did get sold, don't know for sure what they're doing with the property. There's different things happening along that whole corridor that the county and the city really need to be prepared for. That's, could cost the city and the county a lot of money unless we're upfront with the developments and we have the development help pay for some of those costs. So that's why we're recommending taking and going ahead with that corridor study, with the county paying fifty percent of it, the city paying fifty percent. It helps us out for future development. Some of the costs will be put back for Cypress Drive, some of the benefits. Cypress Drive projects, with the feasibility study, some of that cost of the city will be charged against Cypress, but then some will be held in the future probably for the Jeff Cell property and that Douglas Fird corridor. They're one of the three major corridors that the city needs direction on for what the county's gonna allow or not allow. And then that through South, interchange at three-seventy-one and Forty-Eight, of course, benefits the county and the city overall. And then, yeah, and then hopefully we get a development that comes in in, in February and we will have for 2022 and 2023.
Just a curiosity question, if I read your minutes right, he wants to build four and five first?
He wants to build one, two or three first.
Okay.
The utilities commission goes, we got this petition in here from Berrywood. Berrywood wants Cypress Drive through to get the traffic out of their neighborhood. And then the other thing that was brought up is during construction is not a lot of fun. Can we get building, get them to build building five first? So we get rid of construction, chaos for twelve months in one shot, and we get rid of the traffic issue, you know, and get the traffic switched over to Cypress right-of-way. Takes about one year to build that big of apartment building. And right now, the earliest we could schedule the project for is spring of 2023. So if he doesn't start building until the summer of 2022, he doesn't have that first building open until the summer of 2023. None of that has been fully, you know, negotiated with the developer, but it's been brought up to the developer's engineer to talk about phasing. So that's still ongoing discussions with the developer, but he is aware of it, but he has not commented on how he would change his phasing plan.
Comments?
I got the advantage to see a report.
I read your comment.
I mean comments.
Put in your mail.
Glad somebody agreed it.
You recommended the roundabout be built right-of-way?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay. Well, I, I thought that you were quoting in the minutes, say, you wanted to build four and five first, so that's why I brought it up, I was wondering what the reason?
I'll check the minutes. No, he, it was brought up, the commission recommended building four and five first due to the reasons of the construction traffic and inconvenience of those, of those residents right next door for the next twelve months. Once building five is built, then they're, they're sheltered from the rest of the building, you know, that goes on for the next three to three, four years, so. And then they're also about the traffic, get the traffic switched over to Cypress right from day one.
Like that would be a good big move on this part, I would agree with that.
I just said, by building those two firsts puts pressure on us to get that road down, and maybe that's the goal.
Well, from a development standpoint, I mean, Josh can speak to this, we've been talking just from staff level. You know, there's also a reason to take and build from those existing townhomes and those existing apartments. You know, there's also a reason to take and build from those existing townhomes and those, and those existing apartments. And build it from the east to the west because what happens if they get into building two or three and the economy tanks? And they don't get the rest of it built. Well, it gives the city more flexibility and the developer of what develops to the west of there. I mean, that's a big block of land. Do you lock it in with apartment buildings or does something else come up? You know, some other type of development that warrants, you know, thirty acres or a big industrial development, you know? That would warrant doing something different and a different layout. You know, it would, it doesn't, when you build in the middle of something and then build out, you're, you're locking yourself in. Where if you start on the edges and work, you know, systematically, it's better development for the city too. So we've been talking more from a staff standpoint. There's a reason for zoning. There's a reason for, and of course, streets watered sewer, the street connection gets rid of another neighborhood issue over on Berrywood. Cause it does show in the study, it does show about what, two, three hundred cars a day is wanted.
So if you didn't build the Cypress extension, it'd be about three to four hundred more on Berrywood, which is probably about double what's on there right now. If you connect Cypress, there should, it'd be last traffic on Berrywood. Right now, there are potential people who use Berrywood to cut from college to some forty-eight. You should use Cypress.
Any else?
Just reference that the item on the council agenda is to accept the report. And then ask staff, if that happens, the staff will continue to work with the developer. Get the feasibility and the study moving forward and continue that dialogue between the developer and the city. So.
Yeah. Right now, if I'm not hearing any negativity towards the project, it's that we're planning on taking contracts from with Seth for the feasibility study to utilities commission in January. And we're also looking at a, a contract from S E H to do the traffic corridor study. My county road forty-eight, take that to utilities commission here in January as well. So unless we, you know, we have issues tonight that we don't think we're gonna be going forward. We would like to keep down the path and keep the developer on track for twenty twenty-two.
Looks like utilities was okay. We're not worried. All right. You have consensus.
Yeah, we're with the number five, Foley Road four control of idle traffic improvement project.
You know that?
I don't, that's not.
Do you have that sequencing in mind?
Yep.
It's a nice little tablet. Just my laptop, my A P M I. No, because the Microsoft services don't have it at all. Cut costs. That's all the new A P M I C is, which is getting smaller and smaller. So can you buy another, another piece of one maker? Start this power plant as this slide.
All right. Well, my name is Derek Garns, Full of Make, presenting the twenty twenty-two Foley Road four, the road and route drive project. This is uh. We gotta move it forward very long. This is uh one part of the total Inglewood, which was originally the Inglewood Drive project. This is for the red portion, just the city roadway only. So Foley Road will admit fourth and aisle where the mini roundabout is in the commercial area. Again, the overall purpose of the project was to move the railroad crossing from Nobwood to Inglewood Drive. And then also establish that west front end road system for local traffic, a parallel with three seventy-one. So cost comparisons from the feasibility report to now, you can, and right now, we want you to more look at the construction cost right now. Since those ones are more honed in regards to the design or the completion of the design. So in the feasibility study, we had three point seven roughly in our engineer's estimate with fifty percent contingency, which is pretty typical for preliminary design. And we also had added ten percent for COVID nineteen, just because right now the industry is pretty sporadic and, and rapid right now and changes. So you can see the feasibility study was four point four million in total. At the hundred percent level now, we're at four point one for engineer's estimate. If you add that ten percent contingency, which is the city standard practice, that does put us over a little bit, a hundred fifty thousand from the feasibility study. I will say, if we're not below bidder and we get really good prices, that the city standard practice is to remove that ten percent and go down to five percent. That will put us under budget of the feasibility report and also getting near close for at budget overall on the product too. So definitely will reevaluate the cost here once we get bids from the contractors. Uh reasonings for some of the price differences, I'll just do it summary. We had the justification memo. I believe it was part of the package. And that went into pretty much every single detail. This here again is the summary. So the main ones, the staging needs. Since we kind of split the product into two, and also how we're gonna phase this thing. Because it is, the sequencing of events needs to happen in certain orders of contract. It really can be, I guess, pick, pick and choose on where they wanna start the project. Cause Inglewood Drive has to be fully constructed, new railroad crossing, full signal operations on two ten in order for us to fully remove Nobwood. And also we wanna keep traffic open on Nobwood at all times and Inglewood or at least one of them open at all times. So we can have a local road connection. So with that staging needs, that kind of limits the contractor immobilization, traffic control, road control, et cetera, because they're gonna be doing the stages. So like mobilization, they gotta come out here, you know, bring their subs out a couple of times in order to make that sequencing of events happen. Originally, it was kind of thought that we could, well, even team up with the MinDOT project as well, and then we get me split it into two. That when we looked at more in depth, that there is gonna be a little bit of staging costs added to that. For the private utilities, after we had our private utilities meeting in that area with the access road. It gets really tight in there between the railroad right away and the right away adjacent to the private landlords on the access road. With that deep sanitary through there and talking about the private utility needing to relocate. We added an additional five foot D and U from the proposed ten because it is preferred to have the private utilities adjacent to the private property since they're the ones that are, that are being, I guess facilitated or serviced with those utilities. So that additional five feet would just help private utilities relocate without being impacted by construction operations. The lighting, some additional lighting per city direction was added on the access roads or the access road connections to Foley. Some trees were added. That's for the light blockage from Inglewood Drive and just for adding some trees for utility or additional construction impacts that might be unforeseen. The, and then, yeah, the other one, we just added a thousand foot change from F T R reconstruction due to water main, which I'll get to the next slide. The patunus thickness, that one was cut during design. Cause we were given the copy of Mapleton mini roundabouts. Those ones were five inches in thickness, but because this one's gonna be in the commercial development, we had increased thickness there. The good news, the striping did go down because we originally had epoxy grounded in with reflective. The city standard is just paint.
Can I have you back up a slide? I have a question on your chart.
Sure. Yep.
Okay. So I have two totals there at the bottom. We have two columns, right? The feasibility report and then your estimate.
Correct.
So the inch, when you go below total construction cost, all these other costs.
Yep.
How come half of those costs are in the feasibility report and not in the engineer's estimate and vice versa?
Well, we try.
Aren't they cost to the project, don't those count towards total cost of the project on both columns?
So I will say we tried to keep the, the rows together. But unfortunately with how, we wanted to show some of the detail on the final design, we weren't able to do that in this table. So I will say like the engineering construction administration, twenty-two percent. That is distributed in the hundred percent engineer's estimate under the twelve, ten percent engineer's design and twelve percent construction engineering. So that's exactly the same right now. For the legal and other costs, that is again, if you look at the second from the bottom line, that's the, that's the same there. I shouldn't say it's the, it's not exactly the same because the engineer's estimate changed. That's why the price difference is a little, is a little bit off. But I guess there, we tried to keep it side by side comparisons, but like I said, we wanted to split some of the costs out in to make it, I don't know, more presentable. We kept the feasibility, engineering costs all together and then the engineer's estimate in that bottom corner. So they, they are all costs associated and included in here. I guess, is there any in particular?
No, it just, it's confusing.
So then I'll go into the comments received from the utilities commission. Cause they were questioning about why we changed that one from, or the thousand feet from F D R to full recon. Since the water main is proposed there in order to do F D R. Or when you're doing F D R, the, and proposed water main underneath the concrete has to rip them up. You're gonna get a, a material separation contamination between the aggregate services and all in the substrate. That to get to fully guaranteed a good section of roadway per spec, you have to do the full recon. But the reason for the water main extension here was to make that connection from Rush Lake Preserve, where you can see that stuff there on the end. So that in the future, well, well, sorry, from the east, we're, we're building that thousand feet and then connecting into roughly the right away line where the private property could potentially be developed. We weren't gonna punch it through that Nobwood court area because that's already redeveloped, but if those parcels there get redeveloped, then you can make that full connection. For those reasons, like we say up top, water main loops provide better water service, fire flow protection. And yeah, building back it up. So that was the reason for that. And then the other comment from the utilities commission was how come the trees don't go all the way to the access road? So when we, when we designed this, we tried to keep a typical section, you know, roadway with footprint to a minimum that just cuts down the costs. The typical section for Foley Road is the five foot boulevard. So you can see that we just designed the road to, with the minimum to go from that five foot boulevard to the wide boulevard. You can see we're pretty pinched there as we make the connection to Inglewood Drive. The reasoning for the trees were to block the light from the cars on Inglewood Drive cause they're, they're gonna be faced towards the residence. With those trees, our, our L A landscape architect said her experience that's gonna be best to plant these trees. Fifteen foot on center in two rows, where that kind of get that interlocking vegeta- uh vegetated wall. And you can see as we go back to this, the thinner typical section to the east, that we do lose the one row, but we did try to make it where at least the one row of trees goes all the way to that last driveway apron. And then that last section, that boulevard width is underneath feet, which is not really preferred for trees because of snow storage. Maintenance being kind of that close to the road could potentially be in the clear zone, et cetera. But the main point of the trees was again to block the light pollution. And this nearest, or this area toward at the end of the access road is gonna be, you know, very limited to getting that light pollution so the shine happening. So that was the reason for the design. Cut, cut on cost and really the trees aren't missing either in that area because of, of the purpose of the trees was for that light blockage. Uh so then the current schedule, this, this again, well, this here is highlighting just the city portion. We have the MinDOT portion, which is tied to this. The, the city portion here, right? The key dates is that if the resolution is adopted tonight, we'd go advertise tomorrow and then open bids on the thirteenth. Then we'd have the whole assessment period all the way up to notice of awards on April sixth. So tonight on the agenda, it's, yeah, adopt the resolution to approve the product plans and authorize the bid and advertise. So yeah, I guess we're just asking if there's any concerns, comments, questions on this job. This will be the, I guess, last one before we go up to bid.
Like to go back to your schedule?
Sure.
Right there.
All right.
So we are at the twenty-first today. You're gonna bid tomorrow on the twenty-second.
Correct.
And you're gonna open bids on the thirteenth. Is that a little aggressive or?
It, it is a little, well, you, you still get your, your twenty-one days in there. We do know that Christmas is in there.
Here's my, here's my concern. Like you got the holiday coming up. Are you going to discourage people to bid on this thing saying, we can't do that. We can't get this done in time? Will that, will that come back to bite us with less people? I'm just, I'm inexperienced. I don't know.
Yep.
I look at those dates and I think, man, that's, that's crazy. You know?
No, no, no. It's, no, it's definitely was some of our concerns. In order to keep the product on track, we do wanna try to get the bids open. I'd say there probably is some flexibility that we couldn't push it out a week. Right now though, I mean, we're, we're jumping on right at the beginning here of bid season. Most contractors are done and they're getting anxious to bid for the next year. Really, to be honest, probably most contractors don't look at these things until probably the week of due date. I guess that's maybe just, that's when we get all the questions and stuff, which is usually that last week. So I guess we could, we could judge some of that if we get some concerns of contractors are giving us the sense that they can't provide. And sometimes contractors do ask for an extension or just kind of inquiry to say, hey, you know, can you delay this thing? And I guess if we do get some of that feedback, we could look at the wing and it. So I guess so far, there has been some interest and then the contractors are actually requesting that we send them directly to them. I think one of them actually is gonna be down in Florida, so we'll send it to them. So I guess there, the interest is still there. The contractors are saying that they can't bid by the thirteen.
Well, I, I have no expert, but I just, when I read this, I go, okay, I mean, this is kind of, to me, this is a pretty complex project. Maybe this. And I go out and put all the holidays in, or just branches away from this gender first right now. Is that possible? That will it discourage people? You're feeling okay?
Yeah. If, if I'd say, you know, like if you had the holiday, if you're bidding, like say the middle of the summer, July fourth, and you had the whole July fourth weekend instead of Christmas. Then I'd say, yes, you're gonna be looking at bad bids because people are in the dead heat of construction. They're not really looking for work. And yeah, you're losing it because of the holiday here. Yes, we are losing because of the holiday, but we are in that, right at the beginning of bidding season for contractors. Yes, we are losing because of the holiday, but we are in that, right at the beginning of bidding season for contractors, so they're starting to load up. And I will say, we've had a couple of jobs, actually, this past two weeks here, that we had two jobs. And we had, the one actually made ten bidders, which was kind of unprecedented. The other one had about five. But so, so far, we've seen a lot of interest on bidding, so.
How those numbers compare?
They both gave a hundred years, under engineer's estimate. One was five percent and the other one, I don't know percentage, I'll say it was under ten because they were both thoroughly jobs and we had to do the bid justification letter, which is anything plus or minus ten percent.
Trevor, being that you're the main staff person working on this, do you have any additional comments related to the, the proposed timeline?
Because when that one bid comes in, we're going to have a discussion.
Well. We, we have, we have in the past, I mean, if, if we start getting into the first week of January, right after the New Year's and nobody's downloading, we know, you know, on a daily basis, who downloads the plans? Do we know the prime bidders? And if we see there's only one or two bidders in there, yeah, Derek and I are going to be having the conversation. Do we extend the bid opening, you know, another week? Do we go to the twentieth of January? How does that take it, affect the overall total schedule? So we do have that flexibility to do an addendum and change the opening. So I think that takes, takes that out of there, but it will then delay, you know, the award because we have to follow the four twenty-nine process. One question I got, Derek, is you got, you opened the bids on January thirteenth and you got sixty days acceptance. That's more than sixty days, isn't it, between January thirteenth and April sixth? So I'm hoping in your contract, you've got seventy-five days or ninety days? You've got ninety days in the specs. Make sure that we're covered, that we don't have to award, you know, before that assessment appeal period is up.
Okay. Thank you, Trevor.
But, yeah, I, I, we got flexibility in there. The extent we see, the other thing that concerns me, I should add to the record, is, is normally the new pricing from all the suppliers comes out around January first. But with the way that the supply chain is, I don't know if they're going to have all their pricing out right away on January first. So what worries me a little bit is more the supply, suppliers of the pipe and the manholes and all that stuff have their pricing by that time already. That might be a bigger factor in extending the bid opening than actually just the contractors being able to get the bids in.
Council, any other questions, comments? Like the utilities commission notes, okay. Kind of, kind of ridiculous, probably those types of things. Either have to memorize it or we're not, I don't know. Okey dokey. Any else for you?
Nope, as was indicated in the PowerPoint presentation, there is a resolution to accept or approve the plans and specs and authorize the advertising of the bids. So that is not the consent agenda tonight. So it'll be an action that we'll take here in the next twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Hey, that's it. I'm looking for a question to try to work session.
Someone?
Tell us, I mean, my cross all fair.
Aye.
If he passes, you may have this plan.
It's one of those things that you sit there and.